It's a time I'd like to call up the City Commission, the regular City Commission, which has been duly posted to order and this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Leal to lead us in an invocation.
You'll join me in prayer.
Help me Father, we come before you and we ask for your guidance and all the things that we say and all the things that we do. We ask for wisdom, Lord, and the decision-making that we have to do this day. Lord, protect our city and our employees of this city. Allow them to do their work in a manner that reflects your love. Lord, at this point, we lift up our nation to you, the leaders of our nation and everything that's going on with this election, Lord. We just ask that your hand be there and that we have peace. And where we have fallen short of your glory, Lord, we ask for forgiveness for what we have done and that we're able to pick up and move forward. Lord, we just thank you for this day in Jesus Christ. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the government which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everybody for being here in our meeting tonight. Special welcome to our friends from our sister city in Matamoros, Carla Martinez with the Fire Department and Ronaldo Del Toro, our friend. Ronaldo, thank you all for being here. First item on the agenda is a proclamation proclaiming September 22nd, 2016 as Mrs. Eloise Marie Hayes' Day. So it will be a real honor for me to present this proclamation. Would you like me to go there or would you like to come up here? Okay.
I don't know what she said.
Come on over.
She didn't say an annual. She's just one of us.
That's fantastic. She's setting up a great example.
She is. She really is.
Oh, right over here.
I sure don't make that.
Okay. We have this proclamation read in your honor. Whereas Mrs. Eloise Marie Hayes was born on September 13th, 1916, Frederick, Oklahoma, to Dr. and Mrs. A.J. Hayes. She had an identical twin sister, four brothers, a half-sister and a half-brother, all due for decease. Whereas in 1927, her family moved to Wesco, Texas. She graduated from high school in 1933 and attended Mary Harden Baylor College in Felton, Texas. On returning to Wesco, she worked as a cashier at the Ritz Theater, J.C. Penney. Whereas since September 6th, 1942, she married Frank White, her boss at that time. He told her three people. During World War II, he was out of the States for three years and they enjoyed 46 years of marriage when he passed away in 1988. Whereas Mrs. Hayes has four children, son Jojo White, wife Sue from Mercedes, daughter Sharon, and husband Walt Ray, Carla and daughter Ruthie, and husband Dr. James Pearson McCallum. Five grandchildren, six great-grandchildren, three step-grandchildren and step-great-grandchildren. Whereas in 1997, Mrs. Hayes married Reverend Wayne Peck, who was a pastor's wife until he passed away in 2007. Whereas early in her life, rearing her family was her priority. Later she worked as an educational secretary for 19 years and has participated in many organizations, including being a 50-year member at the Order of the Eastern Star, serving twice as Worthy Major of Chapter Number 772 in Wesco, president of Wesco Literary Review Club and Fine Arts Club, past president of the Federation Women's Club and member of Valley Book Review Club. Taught Sunday School classes for many years and before moving to John Knox Village in Wesco was a host mentor for the Harlogans, C.I.S.D. Whereas Mrs. Hayes loved to be active, contributes for longevity to faith, family and funding exercise. She participated in a 5K race in her mid-70s on a trophy for her age group. She participated in aerobic dance belly dance for paper sports. She played in a foundation spot on the track on the ground and modeled for several years for Wells and Wesley. Whereas more impressive is her incredible memory and her joy has always been an inspiration to her grandchildren to follow their names and now her great-grandchildren, the legacy continues. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlem, hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2016 as Mrs. Eloise Marie Hayes' 100th birthday.
My daughter planned the whole thing. She said I had to be here, so here I am. That was so nice. Well, I appreciate it, sir.
All right. We're delighted to have you here with us today. We wish that happy birthday.
Well, thank you. That is something I'll be very proud of.
I think you're gonna spend a few more birthdays with her.
Well, that'd be nice.
One thing that's special is the day, September 22nd. For that day is her youngest grandchild's birthday, so we're gonna tie it all.
Okay. Well, I'll present that to her.
There you go.
You get a picture of her. Get somebody's suit.
Yeah, I had to tell you to go to the car.
Bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was very nice. I don't know where to type my daughter first.
All right. Item two is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep held September 10th, 2016 between M. and J. Streets, starting on West Lincoln, West Johnson and West Grant in District 4.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As you know, we had a clean sweep on September 10th. Between M. and J. Streets, we did West Lincoln, West Johnson, West Grant. We did also a little bit of West Buchanan. We were there from 8:00 in the morning to 12:00 noon. We picked up 2.97 tons of debris. You can see Mr. DeLuca there, the family. We also picked up 55 tires we picked up by the volunteers. The volunteers hired to work. As a matter of fact, that debris came from one house. We had to go twice to that house, so that was just one pickup from that one house. So they really worked hard that morning. Before and after pictures. And I want to say again, thank you to the DeLuca family, Anna Gonzalez, which is also a family member, Tracy Fee, the Damaia House. The Damaia House, they're not releasing the names of the kids anymore. They're not allowed to come to the meetings because of the situation. So that's why there's nothing assigned for the marriage certificates or anything. Our next meeting is gonna be, our, yeah, it's gonna be on October 8th. It's gonna be a community-wide trash off. We'll be at Pendleton Park. We'll be there at the swimming pool parking lot. So anybody's interested in bringing the debris, trash, just bring it on in. Like I said, it's for anybody from the city, welcome to come. If you're looking for volunteers, anybody wants to volunteer also. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. That's great. So we have some certificates to present. Commissioner Dolores, I'll put you down. We have Anna Gonzalez.
She's with the DeLuca family.
Ana Gonzalez, Alfred Lua, Ronaldo Lua, Tracy Fee. Once again, we thank you all for participating and doing this for us and continuing to help make Harlogans beautiful by working on these clean sweeps. You're a real inspiration to all of us.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So item three is the approval of the minutes in special meeting, August 30th, 2016. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, there's a motion to approve.
It's a motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. Motion approved. Consent agenda items for A through J. Is there a motion about the consent agenda?
Sub move, Mayor.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. Motion carries. Item five is consider taking action to approve the Development Corporation for Auctions Budget for Fiscal Year 2016-17. Ravel.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. On September 8th, the EDC Board approved a budget which had revenues of $5,154,819 and expenditures of $5,507,957, which it was a deficit of approximately $350,000. But we also had a surplus this year of about $375,000. So if you look at over the two-year period, we're actually still up. And the deficit is really because we spent, we didn't spend money this year that was really programmed for this year, so we're carrying it on to next year as well. The highlights of the budget include that there's about a 2% increase over projections from this year for next year's sales tax revenues. We have special allocations which are about 2% of the budget. They're being conservative at a $44,000 decrease. We've moved this past year $1.5 million into tax pool, which has actually increased our investment in earnings significantly over the past years. We could probably move some more, but we're very liquid right now. We've got a little over $4 million in the bank right now and we're saving it for a rainy day for the right projects to come along. And some of them are coming. We're working on them. Our rental income is about 15% of our total budget and it's about the same that we're budgeting this upcoming year. We're being a little conservative and scaling it back a little bit just because that's the way we like to budget our revenues. We don't have very many loans outstanding out there from people that owe us. There was one, Dollar Save Energy actually had a payoff this year, which was years ahead of its time, if you will, because we were able to negotiate them coming in and paying it off. So we had approximately $70,000 payment there. And so now we don't have that many loans, so our number on loans outstanding is very small. We do expect to continue to see a growth in our revenues over the next few years. It'll be slow and steady based on our projections. Our expenditures are actually very much in check with what's going on in terms of our revenues. Overall, our fiscal year 1617, which is next year, administrative expenses are gonna be 12% less than this year. That's what we're projecting. And it's really because some of it, we've allocated less money into legal because we don't use legal as much as we were. We have lost an employee and we're not looking at replacing the employee at this point because our workload is pretty much being handled by who we have. We've curtailed a little bit of spending on the administrative side, but our marketing has definitely increased for this coming year. We're gonna be looking at spending a lot more in terms of being out there in the public in conferences and trade shows to where we're promoting Harlogans. We're looking at spending a lot more in local advertising as well. So even though we have less people, we're actually doing more because we're contracting out a lot of that as well. We're setting aside $90,000 to be used for job training or job training programs. If there is an employer that comes in and there's an occupation that is a high-demand occupation that meets certain criteria, then we'll have money set aside to match that grant that the TWC can give us. So we're setting aside some monies for that. We're also bringing back Kaufman's Entrepreneurship Training Program. Basically, we pay for 10 people to go through a 10-week program that teaches them skills to cope with and deal with expanding their business and continuing to grow their business, their small business here in Harlogans. There's a total of about $3.2 million, which is allocated to debt service, which is not very different from last year. At the end of the fiscal year, we'll be at $28.6 million debt in terms of our bonds. So that debt continues to be reduced. And we've got job creation grants this coming year of approximately $900,000 that are being put out for the projects that we had made commitments for. So everything that we've planned for that has happened, we've allocated sufficient funds to cover all that and we still have monies to take on new projects if the projects are the right fit. So, any questions?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the EDC budget?
There's a resolution which is basically the instrument used to adopt the budget.
Yeah. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. Adele, thank you to your board and the hard work that they do and your staff for all of the good things that you're helping leading and making happen in our community from the economic development standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, public hearing to receive comments regarding proposed voluntary annexation to establish the initial zoning to Light Industry LI District 4, 25.970, over tractable land, more or less being 2.145 acres out of Block 41 and 23.825 acres out of Block 67, Palmetto Company subdivision located on the east side of FM 509 or the FM 106, African's Whiting Investments.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Chris Ambey, the applicant and property owner, is requesting the voluntary annexation of 25.97 acres of land, which is this subject property right here, which is located on the east side of FM 509, north of FM 106. Of course, the applicant is proposing a five-lot commercial industrial subdivision where pretty much most of it is currently outside, which is this area right here. And this section of the property, which is about a five-acre tract, is inside the subject property. The developer will be responsible for all the infrastructure provisions required for this proposed annexation subdivision. Be responsible for all street development, water, sewer, storm sewer, fire hydrants and street lights. This is a narrow view of the property. As you can see, it's generally surrounded by industrial use and he is proposing industrial subdivision. The developer has requested that this property be zoned to Light Industries District upon annexation. As you can see, it is consistent with the Light Industry District to the north and to the east of the subject property. And it's also consistent with the future land use plan, which shows this area as industrial use. Per state statute and city ordinance, three public hearings are required and two ordinance readings before the City Commission are required to annex this property. One public hearing has already been conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. This represents the first public hearing before City Commission. Staff is recommending that the public hearing be conducted on the annexation. Take any questions?
All right. We have a public hearing. Is there, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. So, it's a public hearing. So that's it. Item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated end District Light Industry LI District 4, 11.91 plus or minus acres out of Block 67 and 16.1 plus or minus acres out of Block 68. Palmetto Company subdivision located on the north side of FM 106, east of FM 509, African's Whiting Investments.
Mayor Commissioners, this rezoning request, city initial rezoning originated as a result of an applicant requesting rezone a five-acre tract within this area. Rather than just zone this five-acre tract, more or less, staff initiated a larger rezoning request to formulate our recommendation. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is to zone all the not-designated properties. As you can see, the subject property is currently vacant. This is a view from the south side of FM 106 and this is a view looking in from the west from 509 and 106. This is an area view. You can see the property again is currently vacant and to the north, you have, and to the east, you have, excuse me, to the west, you have industrial use. The request is consistent with a future land use map, which shows this area as industrial use. A public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. We didn't notify the property owners within a 200-foot radius. Again, there was no concerns, objections to the request. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending an approval to the request. Take any questions on the item?
Just for clarification, we're doing this now because it's already in the city limit.
Correct. Actually, this relates to the one before, because this is part of the subdivision.
But you've expanded it further to the east.
Right. To the east and to the west. Rather than just zone this one tract here, we included both to formulate a recommendation, which is also consistent with a comprehensive plan.
All right. So I'll go to item A, which is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consider taking action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone the above-described property. I ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlogans and rezoning from not designated end District to Light Industry LI District 4, 11.491 plus or minus acres out of Block 67 and 16.1 plus or minus acres out of Block 68. Palmetto Company subdivision located at the north side of FM 106, east of FM 509, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Sub move, Mayor. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. Motion carries. Item A, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for the renewal of the specific use permit to allow the continuance of the bar lounge in the General Retail GR District located at 201 West Jackson, regarding a legal description of blocks 13 and 14, block 45, Harlogans Original Townsite.
Mayor Commissioners, Luis Benacord has requested the renewal of a specific use permit to continue operating the bar lounge known as Carlito's Winehouse, which is located at 204 West Jackson Street. This is a subject of business. There's no change to the operations of the establishment. The business will continue to operate from Monday through Wednesdays from 11:00 to 8:00 p.m., Thursdays from 12:00 to 11:00 p.m., Fridays and Saturdays from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight and of course on Sundays from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. The building, fire, health and police department have reviewed the request and approved the request. Police department also approved the request. The renewal of the specific use permit was also approved by the downtown board. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. We also notified the property owners within a 200-foot radius. Again, there's no concerns. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval, subject to one, continuing to maintain their license, providing a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, providing better lighting and providing business surveillance during the premises and of course compliance with the appropriate departments. Take any questions on the item?
All right. I've got item A, which is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this SUP? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consider taking action to approve an ordinance on first reading for renewal of the specific use permit to allow for the continuation of the bar lounge located at the above-described location. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlogans to issue a specific use permit to Luis C. Benacord to allow a bar lounge in General Retail GR District located at 204 West Jackson, regarding a legal description of blocks 13 and 14, block 45. Harlogans Original Townsite, subject to one, maintaining the proper state of TABC permits; two, continuing to provide surveillance video and maintain a 30-day retention of the video; three, continuing to provide adequate lighting on the premises; four, continuing to provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.; and five, continuing to comply with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, fire prevention, health and police departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
I do have a question, Mayor. This is now, we're at the point where this goes in perpetuum? We've already done the one year?
Right. This is in perpetuity.
Again, I just want to make that clear. So with that being said, I'd like to make the motion that we approve this.
I'll second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. And I think we gotta say for the record, we congratulate the Benacord family for a great new business in our downtown area, a very popular, very well-run business. It's a good example of what we can do here in our community. We want to congratulate them. Item nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated end District to residential single-family R1 District for the south, 1.75 plus or minus acres out of 1.3 acre tract of block eight, the south, 1.0 plus or minus acres out of 1.97 acre tract of block nine. The south, 0.4 plus or minus acres out of block nine, the south, 0.5 plus or minus acres out of the western part of blocks nine and 10. And 2.97 acres out of block 10, Stewart Place subdivision, survey 298 lots 1 through 3 block 1, not designated subdivision, lots 1 through 3, block 1, Esteban Salina subdivision, rezone from not designated end District to residential mobile home MH District 4, 2.4 plus or minus acres out of 4.4, 4.0 acre tract of land and so forth, which will be read and again, when we read the caption of the ordinance.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a city initiative rezoning to rezone the not-designated properties in what's known as Harlogans Emerging West District in our comprehensive plan. This is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan to zone all the not-designated properties. These properties were annexed into the city in November of 2008. As you can see, the properties along the frontage of the south side of 83 were proposing to zone into general retail, which is generally consistent with developing that area. This section, property here, we're proposing to zone mobile home, which there's a Village West Mobile Home Park. And the rest of this tract, we're proposing to zone, or these lots, proposing to zone to single-family, which is generally developed for single-family use. This is a narrow view of the property. Again, you can see the commercial use. You have a convenience store here, then you have a mechanic shop, beauty salon and a home health business. There is also some single-family use within this general retail district, but single-family use is permitted in the general retail district. This is the Village West Mobile Home Park, which we're proposing for mobile home district. And of course, all this area we're proposing for residential single-family use. This is a street view of the property. You can see this is coming from Alta Spalmas on Business 83. This is a commercial area of the home health business. This is the mechanic shop, again, proposed for general retail. This is, you're coming down on Beckham Road from 83. This is the Mobile Home Park, which we're proposing for mobile home district, another part of the Mobile Home Park. And this is a residential use on Beckham Road. This is on the opposite side, on Alta Spalmas Road, we're proposing for residential use. And this area, as you can see, is, the residential use is generally consistent with a comprehensive plan, low density. The frontage along 83 does show some commercial use and some low density, but this is consistent with a proposed zoning that you have on 83. And of course, this area is generally consistent with a mobile home district. We did notify the property owners within a 200-foot radius. We sent out 26 notices. We see no objections. Public hearing was conducted by P&amp;Z. Again, no objections. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval. Take any questions on the item?
All right. Go to item A, which is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consider taking action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone the properties as described above. I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlogans and rezoning from not designated end District to residential single-family R1 District for the south, 0.7 plus or minus acres out of 1.3 acre tract of block eight, the south, 1.0 plus or minus acre out of 1.97 acre tract of block nine, the south, 0.4 plus or minus acre out of block nine, the south, 0.5 plus or minus acre out of the western part of blocks nine and 10, and 2.97 acres out of block 10. Stewart Place subdivision, survey 298, lots 1 through 3, block 1, not designated subdivision, lots 1 through 3, block 1, Esteban Salina subdivision, rezone from not designated end District to residential mobile home MH District 4, 2.4 plus or minus acres out of a four-acre tract of block eight. Stewart Place subdivision, survey 298, and rezone from not designated end District to general retail GR District for the north, 200 feet, 1.6 plus or minus acres out of a 4.0 acre tract of block eight, the north, 300 feet, 0.3 plus or minus acres out of a 1.3 acre tract of block nine, the north, 300 feet, 0.9 plus or minus acres out of a 1.97 acre tract of block nine. District to residential mobile home MH District for 2.4, plus or minus acres out of a 4-acre tract of block eight. Stewart Place subdivision, survey 298, and rezon from not-designated End District to general retail GR district for the north, 200 feet, 1.6, plus or minus acres out of a 4.0 acre tract of block eight, the north, 300 feet, 0.3, plus or minus acres out of a 1.3 acre tract of block nine, the north, 300 feet, 0.9, plus or minus acres out of a 1.97 acre tract of block nine, the north, 300 feet, 0.34, plus or minus acres out of block nine, the north, 300 feet, 0.5, plus or minus acres out of the western part of block nine and 10, and 1.83 acres out of block 10. Stewart Place subdivision, survey 298, all properties located on the south side of Business 83, between Beckham Road and Alta Spalmas Road, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Can you give me? He missed a point here.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10, consider taking action to approve an interlocal agreement. We have Cameron County, the cities of Los Prestos, South Hunter Island, Portizaville, Rancho Viejo, and San Benito. Reduce criminal activity and the threats of incursions along the southernmost part of the Texas border through the use of grant funding made available under the grant titled Operation Stone Garden.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. This is the second year we have applied for grant funding under the Operation Stone Garden. The grant calls for an interlocal cooperation agreement between the neighboring Cameron County Cities, and the amount allocated for this funding is $43,750. HPD will join other law enforcement agencies in an effort to deter border violence, human and drug smuggling, and criminal organizations that are impacting these type of criminal activity. Staff recommends approval of grant funding and the interlocal agreement signed by the Mayor on behalf of the City Harlingen.
Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Sub move. Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 11, consider taking action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $115,757 for teen service programs. Authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Mayor, City Commissioners, this contract is with the Boys and Girls Club. It is to provide teen services. And like other years, we bring this contract before y'all. And it's in the amount of $115,757. This amount is budgeted. We have taken this contract to the park advisory board. They have recommended approval. The staff is recommending approval. Mr. Gathright is here in the audience as well, in case there's any questions.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Sub move.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 12, consider taking action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $90,104 for youth service programs and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Mayor Commissioners, again, this is a contract with the Boys and Girls Club for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $90,104. The, we have taken it to the park advisory board, and they also have recommended approval. And staff is recommending approval on this contract as well.
Sub move.
Good motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. And I just want to, you know, for the, some of the new members of the commission, going back too many years, and I want to count, the City of Harlingen had a youth services department, and some of us didn't seem that that was the right business for us to be in. But we still saw a need to do things within the community, to serve our youth, and to have the city work with the youth. So we asked instead the Boys and Girls Club to take over that, those functions, and to do those activities that we were trying to do in-house, which made a lot more sense because Gerald actually knows what he's doing, and working with those young people. And so, it's been a great partnership, and we appreciate the work that you all do to serve that function for us, that we really need, and to provide the service to the youth of our community. Gerald gave a very inspirational talk at the Rotary Club a couple of weeks ago, and more, even more inspirational word. The young people who he presented have spoke to us about how the experiences they've had have changed their lives and the community. So I want to congratulate Gerald for his long service with the Boys and Girls Club and his great leadership, and as well, the entire board, please convey our thanks and appreciation to your board for all the good work that you do for this community. Thank you.
I may say we're impossible to do this without the help and support of our city fathers, and also the great community that we live in, where people rise up regularly to support us and other agencies to make Harlingen a new place to live in, with real grand value. I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Gerald. All right. Item 13 is consider taking action to approve a contract with Don Van Ramshorst Jr. to operate, manage, and supervise the HUB Tennis Center for fiscal year 2017, and authorize the city managers to sign the contract.
Mayor, City Commissioners, this is a one-year contract for the Tennis Pro to manage and operate the HUB Tennis Center. The terms are the same. It's $2,000 a month. And what we do is we share part of the membership. He keeps 75%, and we keep 25%. And this amount has been budgeted in this year's, in 2017 fiscal year budget. We have taken this contract to the park advisory board. They made recommendation to present it to the City Commission. Staff is also making recommendation for approval.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 14, consider taking action to approve an ordinance to designate a no parking zone along the east side of Morgan Boulevard from the intersection of Washington Avenue extending north 218 feet to the driveway of St. Paul Lutheran Church.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager. This request was presented to staff due to concerns with parking along the east curb of Morgan Boulevard from the intersection of Washington to the driveway north, St. Paul Lutheran Church. Vehicles parking along the curb restrict the line of sight for drivers exiting the parking lot church. Staff verified the concern with the outside inspection and determined to place a no parking zone along that curb. It's roughly about 218 feet to the driveway entrance of St. Paul Lutheran Church. That's how ending your package. Staff recommends approval of no parking zone along the east side of Morgan Boulevard from the intersection of Washington Avenue to extending north 218 feet to the driveway of St. Paul Lutheran Church.
Okay. Mr. Bill, can you read the caption?
An ordinance to establish no parking zone on the east side of Morgan Boulevard, beginning at its intersection with Washington Avenue, extending north, a distance of approximately 218 linear feet in length, authorizing the towing of vehicles parked, set no parking zone, establishing a penalty not to exceed $200 for violation of the provisions of this ordinance, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Sub move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 15, consider taking action to designate the city manager that the city is designee and authorize the city manager to execute and file the applications for a hazard mitigation grant program on behalf of the city for the purpose of obtaining state and federal financial assistance.
The hazard mitigation grant program is a program funded by FEMA and administered by the Texas Department of Emergency Management. HMGP is a mitigation grant designated to prevent or reduce future loss of life and property through the identification of funding of cost-effective mitigation measures. HMGP also seeks to minimize the cost of future disaster response and recovery. It provides federal funds up to 75% of the approved hazard mitigation projects, and the remaining is the city's responsibility, which is about 25%. This match can be met in a variety of ways, including in-kind services such as engineering. The projects which will be submitted for funding will be the 13th Street Drainage Stitch, Dixieland Drainage Stitch, 5th and 7th Street Drainage System, which is system 021, 9th and 13th Street Drainage Stormwater System, which is Stormwater System 005, and 13th Street and Marshall System 139. Exhibits for the project locations and estimates are included in your packet. Staff recommends approval to authorize the manager, to designate the city manager, to submit the applications on behalf of the city.
Okay. Is there a motion to designate the city manager and authorize him to file the applications for the hazard mitigation grant program?
Sub move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 16, consider taking action to approve an agreement with the Marine Military Academy for the use of hotel motel funds for promotion of tourism by maintaining the Iwo Jima monument and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Okay?
Mayor Commissioners, this contract is for $10,000 to be taken from the hotel motel funds to the, granted to the Marine Military Academy for the upkeep of the Iwo Jima monument. The funds have been approved in the budget, and staff recommends approval.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Sub move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Item 17, consider taking action to approve an agreement with the Harlingen Performing Arts Theater, use of hotel motel funds to promote tourism through the arts in the form of community theater, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Again, this is for $24,000 to be taken from the hotel motel funds, allocated to the Harlingen Performing Arts Theater. The funds have been approved in the budget, and staff recommends approval.
Sub move.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement? I'm sorry.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 18, consider taking action to approve an agreement for Rogan Valley Birding Festival for the use of hotel motel funds for promotion of tourism through the annual birding festival and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Gabe?
Mayor, this is for $41,000 in hotel motel funds to be granted to the Rogan Valley Birding Festival for the promotion of the annual birding festival. This year's event is scheduled to be from November 2nd through November 6th. The funds have been approved, and staff recommends approval. Any motion?
Mayor, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. One of our great signature events in Harlingen, the Birding Festival. Item 19, consider taking action to approve an agreement with Loews and Fishes to provide meals for the homeless and needy through their kitchen and food pantry, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Mayor Commissioners, this is for a contract in the amount of $50,000 to be given to the Loews and Fishes for provision of meals to the homeless and needy. The funds have been approved in this year's budget, and staff recommends approval.
Sub move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Thank Bill Reagan and his board, and everything you guys do at Loews and Fishes. Congratulations on your 25th anniversary. What a great celebration you all had Saturday night. It's really, really a true community event, so thank you all.
Thanks very much. Thank you for coming, Mayor, and wish you're aware of the comments. Thanks for giving me the permission.
You're welcome. Item 20, consider taking action to approve a request from the sister city of Matamoros to Malipas for donation of fire equipment to carry the equipment as surplus property and authorize the city manager to sign necessary documents.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. City of Harlingen received a request from the sister city of Matamoros to Malipas for the donation of a fire truck. That'll be reserve unit number six for HFD. This unit is no longer operable, does not meet state, our state and federal standards, and is in the state of disrepair. At this point, this unit is approximately 26 years old. Our life expectancy for our frontline units are 15 years with five years of reserve status. This has exceeded it by total package of six, making it a total 26 years total. Staff recommends declaring this unit as surplus and donating it to the sister city of Matamoros in its current condition.
Sub move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Item 21, consider taking action to approve fire protection service contract with the City of Harlingen and its City Premier Meta, by fire protection services for a cost of $106,620.20, payable quarterly installments, $26,650.50, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Chief?
Mayor, the rate for fire protection services for the City Premier Meta is at 10 cents per 100 valuation based on the city's 2016 certified net taxable value. City Premier Meta has reviewed this contract, and we bring it before you. They have signed the agreement with the stated provisions. Approval of this contract will ensure fire protection services continue for this community for the agreed-upon compensation of $106,620.20, payable in the quarterly installments of $26,650.05 on the following dates, those being December 31st, 2016, March 31st, 2017, June 31st, 2017, and September 30th, 2017. Staff recommends that the City of Harlingen continue, approve the FY 2015, 2016 fire protection services contract with the City of Premier Meta as agreed upon.
Chief, and this rate is set by the county?
Yes, that's correct.
We're not, we're not setting rates. This is, we're just complying with the county.
We're in compliance. That's correct.
In that case, I move that we...
I'll answer any questions you might have.
That's the most we can set the rate at.
That's correct.
For services outside the city within the county area.
Motion, I'll second. He has motion.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Mayor, if I may, the other contracts will be forthcoming to you for the other communities by the next meeting. We're just awaiting some of the documents to come forth to us. That'll be for the City of Palm Valley, Combs, and the Cameron County Emergency Services District will be coming before you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may ask our city manager, if might maybe excuse, they want to go see the fire truck, so they wanted me to accompany them.
We washed it and cleaned it all up.
It's all big and clean. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, we're happy to be able to provide that surplus unit to our sister city of Matamoros, and it's putting it to a good use.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You'll have a good evening.
Item 20, second. 22, consider taking action to approve the City of Harlingen updated pay table for non-civil service employees, effective date about October 5th, 2016.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, the Department of Labor this summer passed their final regulations concerning overtime pay, and they put an effective date for us to set it by December the 1st. What they've done is they've changed the definition for an exempt employee, where now it's at a little bit below 47.5. So in order to comply with these regulations, we've changed our pay tables to reflect that amount. So now, our exempt employees will start at the 47.5. We have a number of employees that were not at that rate, so we lowered them to, not the pay, but we lowered them to a non-exempt status. So these folks will now be eligible for overtime. Just yesterday, there was a lawsuit filed to try to stop this, and we are monitoring that, but for now, we're asking that we do approve this so we can make sure we're in compliance by December the 1st, as required by the Department of Labor.
But why do you want to do it early?
Because we want to make sure we implement it. We don't want to be, find ourselves in violation, and it's...
You'd only be in violation if you go past the December.
Yeah.
Or do you want to pay more?
We're not going to pay more. There will be no increases to anybody, and the city manager pretty much has instructed us to stay within the required hours. In other words, we're going to have to rearrange schedules and do that sort of thing to live...
One of the things that we hadn't done in a while is review our pay scale for all the employees, non-civil service, and we wanted to update those pay scales to really reflect what's going on in the job market these days, so it can be competitive. reflect what's going on in the job market these days so we can be competitive and that's what we're doing with that. Not only the 47.5, but also adjusting all other pay scales for non-civil service employees so that we can remain competitive.
Because I would imagine you're going to take a hit on the overtime, right?
In certain positions, I think it boils down to scheduling and we're going to be monitoring that.
A lot of the employees that were affected are your white collar folks like our planners, our accountants, our senior accountants, and those we can manage. The only area where we'll have to do some adjustment, like for instance, folks out at, like sanitation, where we have a couple of supervisors that currently put in a lot of hours, but now we'll be able to have to manage that better too.
Well, my concern would be is we've talked about staffing and retention and everything we've talked about, and if we're shorthanded and then you're running now a higher rate, that's going to affect your overtime. I would feel more comfortable with, we staff, you know, look at October, November and try to staff the numbers to the highest, but we're not running into more overtime. That would be my concern.
Yeah, in other words, delay the implementation.
Go ahead.
We could possibly delay the implementation to, closer to November the 16th. In other words, make this a rate...
Because do you have numbers on how many people that affects, you know, whether it's percentage or, I'd like to see some, you know, information on it of exactly how many people is affected and if you have a cost estimate on what it is.
But this is, this is more, this is a legal requirement more than a financial issue.
Yes, sir. No, I know what it is, but you're doing it early. And if, if you're shorthanded in certain departments, you know, we're prepared to, to handle that overtime of people that were exempt and now won't be exempt as of October 5th. That's my concern.
Again, we can delay the implementation of this. We thought it'd be a good idea to implement it along with the beginning of the, of the fiscal year. So like that would, would be used to operating this way. The reason we're waiting for the six instead of the first is because if not, you're going to have some people that half a pay period will be hourly and half will be exempt. So that would create turmoil, so it's easier to start at the beginning of the pay period.
Now, with the pay scale, I'm also trying to address some employees, some upper level executive employees that have been capped out for a long time and trying to address those. Again, because of the job market, every time we hire somebody new to replace somebody that's left, we end up paying them more money.
Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to address those with this new pay scale. If the concern is only the 47.5 issue, then we can hold off on that portion of it, but I would ask that you still consider the revised pay scales so afford me the ability to adjust some of these savings.
I understand the overtime. I understand, I have a pretty good understanding of it.
Okay, one of the wishes of the commission.
If we, if we approve this, we're not going to roll out the exempt, non-exempt, or are we going to go ahead and roll out the exempt, non-exempt? Because some people will go from exempt to non-exempt based on this scale, right?
We can bring back the exempt, non-exempt issue sometime, what, before November?
What we can do is, this, this schedule right here does not change anybody's pay.
Correct.
But what we can do is we can hold off on the actual designation of exempt and non-exempt until November the 16th, which is a pay period right before this.
Would that satisfy your concerns of me to that?
Right. We're bound by December the 1st because of the federal ruling. But somebody has filed a lawsuit. So I, I think we should just accept this because we have to do it, but we delay the actual status until we can find out what's going to happen.
Yeah, now again, we're talking about just the exempt and non-exempt, the 47.5. If we can hold off on that, I would still like to adjust the pay scales to reflect...
I understand the pay scales. I mean, I don't know, my, my, my staff, you know...
I just asked if you're going to combine them together since we were going to present this, I said, let's go ahead and combine them all.
Lawsuit was filed yesterday in the Eastern District of Texas in federal court, along with Texas and I think about 20 other states seeking an injunction against the federal government to stop this, so it was just filed, so we don't really know.
And today the, today the Secretary of Labor put out this long letter saying that there's feel very strongly they're going to prevail.
Well, what if we, what if we adopt, what if we adopt the updated pay table for non-civil service employees effective...
October 5th.
October 5th and approve the change regarding the non-exempt status effective November...
What's it, 16? Well, 16, so you give us a pay period.
Yes, November 16th. So, so adopt the pay scale effective October 5th and then, and the...
Exempt status.
Exempt status, November 16th.
Yes, sir.
That's a motion. Yeah, so that's a motion.
That's the motion, I'll second that motion.
And any other discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. That's a good point, so we think, but we got, also got the, got to take care of. And then the courts can change it if they want to.
We'll change it back.
October, so item 23, consider taking action to approve a resolution to support domestic space launch industry and necessary action by Congress to ensure the continued and continued growth of space launch jobs in the industry in Texas.
United Launch Alliance has asked for this resolution in support of their efforts to secure RD-180 engines for their Atlas V and staff has recommended approval. As we all know, United Launch Alliance has been in Harlingen for many years, serving the space industry and we want them to continue to do that, so staff is recommending approval.
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. There was an exciting launch of the Osiris Rex, the probe to make contact with the asteroid that variant was made here in Harlingen. If you saw a picture of it on Facebook, it was pretty cool.
Yeah.
Item 24, consider taking action to approve the ranking of the respondents to the request for qualifications for professional legal services and authorize the city manager to negotiate contract with highest ranked legal firm.
Mayor Commissioners, we advertise a request for qualifications for seeking responses from legal firms to take over legal services and responsibilities for the city, including that of the city attorney. What we are looking for is a firm that can provide the depth that we need in the variety of areas that we look at, including civil service, municipal court, contracts, property acquisition and what have you. We did get two responses from two different law firms and a committee consisting of both assistant city managers, the city attorney, our HR director and myself ranked all the responses individually and you have a copy of the scoring sheet in your packet. So staff is recommending, I am recommending that the city council authorize me to negotiate with the highest ranked firm, which is Denton, Navarro, Rocha, Bernard Hyde and ZEC to see we can come to terms on a contract for legal services that'll include the responsibility of city attorney.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, good. Item 25, board appointments. Do we have any board appointments?
Yes. Have a reappointment of John Givada to the Harlingen Community Improvement Board, and Alessandro Munoz to the Harlingen Pride Advisory Board.
The referee's going.
I would also like to interject, we have a board solicited to you, the TIF, Taxicent Increment Finance Board. It shows in our provision that the commission appoints, not individual commissioners. Our current board is made up of Michael Mesmore, myself, Eric Zehi, Tyler Ogierah, Felix Sanchez and Victor Verriell. I understand that Felix Sanchez does not want to serve and I'd like to know if we can just have them approved to, because right now everybody is expired, reappoint the board with the exception of Felix, leave that position open to a later date. We'll appoint somebody to that TIF board, that way we can go back and be in compliance.
Okay. Will you make that nomination on behalf of the city commission?
I'm making that nomination on behalf of the city commission.
And so is there, well, first of all, let's take care of your appointments. Does anybody else have any other appointments on the, on the individual appointments?
On the individual appointments, I just have those two.
Is there a motion to approve, permissionally announced, individual appointments?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So now you've made a motion to not, or you've nominated the appointment of the members you specified to the TIRS boards.
Correct. I'm the chairman of that board, so I'd just like to keep it intact.
Okay, so he's nominated them on behalf of the commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We are past item 26. We're going to reschedule that until we have the entire commission present. Item 27, citizens communication.
Yolanda Shoppe, Board...
What was the topic?
Board appointments. Board appointments. Yolanda Shoppe, 508, Altus Panas. My concern is how, how can it be possible that a board appointee be the same family? There's plenty of people in the DID board that own properties, but yet they were skipped over or they choose not to be appointed. I don't think they don't want to be appointed because they want to be part of the process. But we have Bill DeBrook, who was an appointee and then he became chairman and he would, I was there in one of the meetings when a grant was approved and he turned right around, went outside, got his group of people and fixed the storefront of somebody. Now that is the wolf watching over the chicken group. Then you have Steve, who has some business out there, and now you appointed Mrs. Wagner. They're related, it's mother and father, mother and son. Therefore, to me, as I make the motion, he second said, it's a done deal. You need to watch what's going on. That's a conflict of interest. If it isn't, you're going to get in trouble. Thank you.
Next.
Wayne Lowry, Habitat Event.
Mr. Lowry, welcome.
Wayne Lowry, 2614 Clifford, Mayor, City Commission and staff. I just want to formally invite everyone to our Habitat Event tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at Jackson Square Event Center. It will be a great evening for a great cause. The funds and the proceeds from that event will go towards the house that we're working in partnership with the city that's located at 614 North C Street. If you remember, that is the property that was demolished last year by the National Guard and so it is our goal, the family's been selected and we would like to build that home and have it completed before Christmas so that it will be ready and presentable for the National Guard when they return to see the full cycle of this project. So at this point, we have raised over $15,000 for this event, but we would love your presence and all that are here to be there to help us move this project forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Wayne. That concludes our citizens communication. That concludes our meeting for tonight. We adjourn. Thank you all.